Thank you, Ms. King, colleagues, and good evening to everyone. I want to welcome everyone to our June 25, 2020 meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. As usual, I would ask everyone to please turn off your wireless devices so that you will not interfere in our meeting this evening. As usual, the community may observe our meeting. I'll ask all of everyone to mute your devices, both those who are observing as well as those who are participating as panelists. Our meeting is being recorded and it will be available to the public on our board webpage. I do want, at this point, the community to know that the board is working very hard to enhance our community's access to the board during our Zoom proceedings. Hopefully, we'll be back live and back in the Sassa building before too long. But if, for some reason, that is not the case, the board is considering options that will expand the accessibility of the public to us. In terms of the opportunity to come before the board and speak to us virtually in some way. We've heard concerns about that and we're doing our best to address it. At this point, I'm going to ask our student board member, Mr. Omalola, to please lead us in the board's prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Apologies. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For this republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you, Mr. Omalola. Ms. Berkeley, at this point, would you please call the row?
Yes, sir. Good evening, board members and administration.
Good evening.
I'm going to unmute everyone's mic so I can hear you all when I call names. Mrs. Ahmed? Here. Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Omalola?
Here.
Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Swan? Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Present.
Mr. Wallace?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
And Dr. Thornton?
Present, and thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Colleagues, if you will now turn your attention to the agenda for our meeting, and a motion is in order to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Boozer, no, Ms. Queen and Ms. Williams to adopt the agenda. Any modifications to it? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, Ms. King, that it's unanimous, and thank you, colleagues. If you will now, please turn your attention to our minutes of June 11. A motion to adopt is in order?
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Ms. Queen and Ms. Ahmed. Any modifications to the agenda, to the minutes of June 11? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. Ms. King, let the record reflect that the adoption of the minutes of June 11 is unanimous. Colleagues, I have a brief report as chair of the board. I first want to indicate that we will have a point of personal privilege at the end of our meeting given to Mr. Omalola as our student member who will be participating in the final meeting of the school year. So we will hear from him at the end of our meeting. And I want to also say to the public that we have now been notified by Dr. Goldson that our replacement student board member, Ms. Nina Jackson from Oxon Hill High School, replaced Mr. Omalola. A very, very impressive person, so we look forward to her service as the next student school board member. Colleagues, at this point, I would like to acknowledge the passing of two individuals that are connected historically and presently with the Prince George's County school system. Well, they were. The first person is Keith McGriff, who's a bus driver at the Douglas Bus Lot. And secondly is Lucy War. Lucy War was the first African-American female judge in Prince George's County's history. She was the first judge appointed, female judge appointed in 1984. But her connection to the Board of Education of Prince George's County is through her husband, who is Jesse War. Jesse War was the first appointed, he was the first appointed to the board, the first black person appointed to the board in 1968. And he was the first black person to serve as chair of the Board of Education. Now, the footprint of Lucy War and Jesse War and the history of Prince George's County, a male and a female and an African-American, is legendary. And I'll be asking you for a moment of silence for both Keith McGriff as well as Lucy War. She was also the first female judge, in the black female judge in the history of Prince George's County. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, colleagues. And we'll ask us to keep their families in our prayers and our thoughts. An announcement beginning next week, the Board of Education will recess until August. And so, and I want to say too, I know the public will miss us and we'll miss each other, but we'll come back strong and energized and get ready for the 2020-21 school year. I would like to take a moment to thank my colleagues for the wonderful work that the board members have done this year. We'll thank the committee chairs, the three committee chairs who've done excellent work this year. Our budget committee, as you'll see the results of their work tonight. You also see the work of the results of our policy committee with the recommendations coming from Ms. Ahmed and Ms. Boozer Strather and those of us who served on that committee, and the work of our academic achievement committee in standing up our curriculum review and those issues. So just excellent work, colleagues, and I think the public should know the work that you have done. We had a great year. We're going to close it out this year. Our two anchor points, Kerwin and HBCU, even though they were set aside gubernatorially, I'm sure that come January of next year, they will be stood up again. You know, those were two of our five top priorities legislatively. We worked hard throughout the year, as you all know, interacting with our community, fighting for the resources that our children need. And we got it through the General Assembly with the strong support of this board and with the council, with Prince George's County's population. We're not going to give that up. It would be remiss of me, as chairman of the board, for me not to say that this board, and thank you all for cooperating with Dr. Goldson in our COVID-19 transition and providing a policy framework within which she could function. I think most people, all people agree that the work that she and her staff have done in this area is exemplary, but it would not be possible without the policy framework that you all as a board created. It's not out in the public, it's in meetings, and it's decisions that we have made, so thank you for doing that collaboratively. I want to thank you for the policy decisions that you made throughout the year anchored by financial literacy and the consensus position that you took on that. But it's only one example of the many policy decisions that we made as a board. And finally, our graduation, our e-graduation, the virtual graduation that's so celebrated, the 8,000 exemplary students who emerged from our school system. So let's never take for granted, colleagues, we work hard. Sometimes the things that I'm mentioning don't get mentioned, but let's never take that for granted. And I want to thank all of you for the work that you have done this year. And I would be remiss, Ms. King, if I did not single out you and your staff and the work that you have done supporting this Board of Education this year through it all. And the board never takes that for granted, so please extend the board's appreciation to your staff. Ms. Berkeley is here personally to hear it, but for those who are not, who may not be observing us, please extend our sincere thanks for the hard work that they do on behalf of this board. Colleagues, that ends my chair report. Now, I'll ask Dr. Goldson to offer her report. Dr. Goldson?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Good evening again. The school year has wrapped up and we are moving forward with plans for instruction this fall. We have a team working on recommendations for instruction for the 2020-2021 school year. A new reopening PGCPS webpage will launch next week where you can find the latest information on the process. While summer vacation is here, we encourage families and students to sign up now for virtual learning opportunities that include original course credit, credit recovery, and enrichment programs in reading, English language arts, and mathematics, along with specialized programs for science and technology, career exploration, and more. Please visit our webpage under summer programs for additional details. Thus far, we have over 7,000 students have enrolled for our summer virtual learning program. Our Summer Meals Program kicks off Monday, June 29, and runs through Thursday, August 13. Breakfast and lunch at Grab and Go Meals can be accessed from more than 80 school sites and 12 apartment complexes. Visit our website for a complete list of locations. Earlier today, I was joined by board member Swan, board member Williams, and board member Queen as we announced the 2020-2021 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Mary Picorelli, who teaches third grade at Cooper Lane Elementary School. I want to congratulate all the finalists for Teacher of the Year, Ms. Vitalia Forbes, a second-grade teacher at Accokeet Academy Elementary, Lindsay Joseph, an English teacher at Crossland High School, and Joshua Pleasant, a rural culture and geography teacher at Benjamin Tasker Middle School. Lastly, I want to wish one of the executive leadership team members well as they embark on their retirement, and that is Dr. Gwen Dillon-Mason, who has served students and families for 40 years and has finally decided to take some time to spend with her family and eventually travel when COVID-19 is over. She will be missed, she leaves behind an amazing legacy of excellence. I'm grateful to have Dr. Mason serve as a part of the executive leadership team while I was CEO. And one more, I just want to thank the Board of Education for your continued support during this unprecedented time. I had an opportunity to present to a committee just earlier this week on all that we have accomplished since March until now, and I think I was blown away by how much we were able to accomplish as a team. And so I cannot say thank you enough. We have continued to serve our students, our families, and our staff in a way that I think they all are pleased and continue to say that they are Prince George's County Public School proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson, for your comments. Colleagues, we will now move to item 3.0, which is the public comment, and it's what I referenced in my comment. I'm reminding the public that we are receiving your written comments. Those comments are provided to board members onboard. We will, as I said, try to increase your visibility and footprint if we have to remain in the virtual environment. So please continue to submit your comments to the board members. The board members also know, and Ms. King will remind you, where you can access those comments, and so, Ms. King, please follow up in that regard. We will now move, colleagues, to budget consent agenda. And Dr. Goldson, would you now introduce items 4.1 to 4.4? And I think you might want to pull 4.4, but go ahead.
Correct. Items 4.1 through 4.3 requires board approval of a board action summaries for renovations at Bowie High School Annex, roof replacement at Largo High School, and the ratification of local 400 negotiated agreement.
Colleagues, the vote is on items 4.1 to 4.3. We'll vote separately on 4.4. A motion is in order?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve budget consent items 4.1 to 4.3. Hearing no questions about those items, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposing, no. Ms. King, I don't see any opposition, so let the record reflect unanimous approval of items 4.1 to 4.3. Dr. Goldson, would you please introduce item 4.4?
Yes, item 4.4 requires board approval, and that's the reconciliation and adoption of the FY 2021 annual operating budget.
A motion is in order for discussion?
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board adopts the reconciliation proposal coming from our Budget Obafa Committee. I will entertain comments from board members, but before doing so, let me, as chair of the board, on behalf of the board, extend to the Obafa Committee and its leader, Mr. Wallace, vice chair, Mr. Burrows, our thanks for the work that you all have done in working with Dr. Goldson and Mr. Hurstman in proposing this reconciliation to us. Thank you, thank you for the work that you do, you did, and closing that gap with Dr. Goldson, it's a major, it's a large gap, and we appreciate the work that you did. Mr. Hurstman, gosh, there you are, right? Sir, we deeply appreciate what you and your staff have.
Thank you, sir.
You, you, obviously, it's this Dr. Goldson who makes the final decision, but I'm sure she would let us know that you are the foundation under her as she makes those difficult decisions. I'm sure she'll want to say some other things. But closing that almost $37 million budget gap is a yeoman's task, and it takes some yeoman's work to do that, and we deeply appreciate you, sir, and your staff. Dr. Goldson, I know I'm still in your space, we haven't proved it yet, but if you want to make a comment about Mr. Hurstman or anything, please do so now.
Thank you. I too just want to say thank you to Mr. Herbertsmann, who did a phenomenal job of making sure that we were able to make that cut, but to hold our employees harmless so that they would not be financially affected during this COVID-19 experience, and so I'm forever grateful for that. In addition, while all of this was happening, he still, we still had to submit an application for the CARES Act funding to help to close this gap, and then we just received an application to access the governor's funding. So it never stops with him and his team, so I just cannot say thank you enough. I'm sure our employees will appreciate it, but thank you so much. And then I know he has a few people he'd like to thank as well.
Thank you. And before, Mr. Hurstman, before you do that, I think I really was disrespectful of the chair of the committee. Mr. Wallace, you have any comments you want to make? I particularly want you to lift up the outreach to the community, but please proceed if you're there. I think he might not be there, but I certainly, again, want to thank him. I wanted to take this opportunity to say that we did reach out to the community, and, Ms. King, we got hundreds of responses from the community to what Dr. Goldson proposed in our community survey. And I want to thank the communities for responding to our community survey. We do feel concerns and we make these decisions. Now, Mr. Hurstman, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to the board chair, the Board of Education, and the CEO for this opportunity. Developing a $2.3 billion budget for a school system this complex is a remarkable task, and it represents a whole community effort. So on behalf of the CEO and her executive cabinet, I wanted to take a brief moment to thank just some of those that were involved in this year-long budget process. First, thank you to the Board of Education and its leadership and staff. Also, we want to extend a thank you to our county and state partners, all of our labor partners, our principals and other school administrators, all the directors, managers, and department staff that have worked on this budget, all the students, parents, employees, and other community members that have provided valuable input and advocated on behalf of many aspects of this budget. To the executive leadership team that's been intimately involved in this whole process, lucky to work with colleagues that are so deeply committed, knowledgeable about their areas, and are a constant valued and willing thought partner throughout this budget process. We'd also like to thank the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee and their staff. Chair Wallace and the committee have collaborated with us throughout all three iterations of this budget, and the final product was vastly improved from their input. Finally, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the budget team for their work. Thank you to our budget supervisors, Apama Smith, Dana Eastep, and Darlene Bond, and they have really led this whole effort. And to the other members of the budget team, Felicia Hyatt, Jean Overton, Lockwin, Darlene House, Michelle Crowley, Jaclyn Warner-Wiggins, Chris Jones, Caducee Musarroyo, and Kristy Miller. And thank you to the several members of our team that have recently retired or moved on to our other departments that played critical roles in this budget as well, including Karen Thorne, Danny Washington, and Lisa Atchison. The entire budget team has done a fantastic, has done fantastic work throughout this process, and I'm very thankful for their leadership. And thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wallace, I know that you're back, sir, we've been talking about you. Any comments you want to make, chair of the committee?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, colleagues. It has been a pleasure serving on the, first, the Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, now the Obafa Committee. I was honored to chair the committee for two years and serve on it for four. And I will say, and I said this at the meeting of the committee on Monday, it has been an absolute pleasure and an experience to chair the committee this year. We have done great work, and as the committee chair, I take full responsibility for the outstanding budget that we have put forth today reconciled. I did all the, I did none of the work, but I would think some of the credit. No, I joke and I kid about that. I want to take a particular moment to highlight the great work of our CFO, Mr. Herbertsmann, and his collaboration with the committee. It has been stellar, and I thank him personally for his collaboration. For my colleagues on the committee, I thank you all as well for your hard work, for your questions that you asked, your deep diving questions, your analytical perspectives that you place on this entire budget, even when we were introducing our board agenda for our operating budget for this year. I thank you all so much. And on a personal note, I want to thank the CEO for including the Universal Meals Program and the expansion of our Equity and Excellence Office. They were two personal initiatives of mine, and I thank her so much for her collaboration and support in funding those two initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do think, I saw Ms. Ahmed, and then we'll try to adopt it. Ms. Ahmed?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. And thank you, Chief Herbertsmann, for all the work that you've done, Dr. Goldson, and your, and both of your teams, and being able to make this happen. I just wanted to ask for some information publicly. I know I had reached out a couple of days ago around when it comes to closing this budget gap. I know we have major categories here, but I wanted to ask for a further clarification on what the line items and departments might be where those cuts, cuts for lack of a better word, have to be made in order to close the gaps so that community members can know, so that we can know, and that that can be very clear. And so I just want to ask for that as a, as a follow-up item in addition to.
We sent that.
Oh, man, okay, well, if it could be posted publicly as a follow-up item for this, I think that would be helpful because I think other members of the public, it'd be good for the whole, the board to know, but also the public to know the details surrounding that. I'd also ask, when it comes to fund balance, I know where the proposal involved using $9 million of fund balance. Where does that leave us now?
So I could address that one, and we did answer that one in writing. So due to the financial statement reporting requirements, the answer really is not that simple. Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54, or GASB 54, is the primary guidance around fund balance reporting, and that statement really talks about how we're allowed to talk about fund balance. But the important thing is that there, when we talk about fund balance, there's a lot that goes into that. For example, it's not just really how a lot of people think about it in terms of savings account. It is, also includes things like the use of fund balance that we're planning to use each year in the budget, as well as some of our inventories, which to actually use, we would have to liquidate. I think that what we really want to get to is talk about our unassigned fund balance, and that right now, or as of June 30, 2019, the beginning of the current fiscal year, was right about $50 million. So if we are going to fully spend this budget and bring in revenue as we thought we would for both FY 20 and 21, where we'd be at the end of that process is at about, sorry, right around $6 million left, assuming that everything fully spent out. I want to be clear that that is a big assumption, that we would get to that point. I also want to say, whenever I'm talking about fund balance, that we need to be funding things through fund balance that are true one-time expenditures, because if we are looking to fund things that are multi-year or continuing expenditures, we're going to quickly run out of that fund balance. And finally, I would say that though it appears that we have a large fund balance, it is actually less than any of the recommendations from organizations like the Government Finance Officers Association. And just one last thought on this. We say we use $9 million in fund balance, but we're actually using, is an increase of $9 million from the Board of Education-approved amount. And what that means is in FY 20, the current year, where we were planning to use $28 million in the Board of Education's requested budget, we went up to $35, and this action takes us to a use of $44 million for next year.
Thank you, Chief Herbertsmann. I can imagine that we would have a lot of one-time expenses to address COVID, and so I just kind of wanted to see how that translated over, so I appreciate that. I appreciate the work that you do, and I'm also really looking forward to the next year's budget cycle where you're going to continue following that zero-based budgeting model and making sure that we're being as financially responsible as we can with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. And again, Mr. Hurstman, Dr. Goldson, thank you. Colleagues, the vote is on the adoption of the reconciled FY 21 annual operating budget. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no?
No.
Let the record.
No.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Murray, okay. Ms. King, let the record reflect, all board members voting yes, except Mr. Murray voting, is that no? Okay, thank you very much, colleagues, for that. We will now move to emergency items, colleagues, 5.0. And I will call on Ms. Ahmed to present those items. The reason for it is because we have to, Dr. Goldson has to develop administrative procedures affecting next year's school year, so Ms. Ahmed, please proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Colleagues, the Policy and Governance Committee met on June 16 with all committee members in attendance, myself, vice chair Boozer Strather, Dr. Thornton, Mr. Omalola, and Mr. Thomas. And during this meeting, we considered the workplace bullying policy as well as the behavior threat assessment policy that's before you today. The behavior threat assessment policy is actually a policy we have to put in place due to state law. And so we did as best a job as we could to follow the law, follow the model policy, but also make sure that we're sticking to our core in terms of restorative justice practices and incorporating that into the policy. And so both of those items are before us today as emergency items, which is atypical of the process that's outlined. The reason for that is what Dr. Thornton had mentioned, which is that, and by the suggestion of administration, by the suggestion of administration, approving those items at this board meeting would allow for administration to produce administrative procedures to implement the policies for the beginning of the school year. The policies that are before you are policies that have been, have incorporated public comment that came through a public comment period. And so if you look online, you'll see all of the yellow highlighted items are the ones that were added either due to public comment or due through collaboration that we had in the committee. And there were a number of really good points that the public made that were incorporated. So I was very happy to see that type of incorporation of the public into the policy, and I think you'll see that the work product before you was unanimously supported by the committee in moving forward. And that's for both the workplace bullying policy and the behavior threat assessment policy. Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I want to receive a, we don't need a motion on that, but I do want to comment. This is an example of exemplary work on behalf of one of our committees, particularly involving. one of our committees, particularly involving community input. You remember the board adopted an adjusted policy development process? This is one of the best examples of that, where the committee does its work, comes before the Board of Education, gets authorization to send it out to the community. The community responds, the community, the committee reacts, and then gives the board an adjusted document. This is an exemplary case of that. So, Ms. Ahmed, to you and our committee colleagues, thank you for that. The vote is on workplace bullying policy as well as.
Wait a word, Dr. Thornton, I forgot to move on behalf of the committee, so I'm moving on.
You should do that. There's a motion from the Chair to adopt the emergency items, workplace bullying, as well as behavioral threat assessment policy. Any questions from board members? Hearing none. And by the way, thank you, Ms. Ahmed, for tracking those changes so board members could follow. Thank you. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect, Ms. King, that the vote is unanimous for both of those items. Colleagues, we're now at the point in our meeting where we will celebrate our future national leaders in the service of our board member, Mr. Joshua Omalola. Mr. Omalola, before I call on you for a point of personal privilege, I do want to read the board's resolution or distinguished award that we are giving you for your service as a board. Do you have that plaque, sir, with you? That expensive plaque that I paid for? That's the plaque that the board is awarding to our student board member. And let me read, colleagues, the citation that is on that plaque, and then I'll call on Mr. Omalola. It's an award for distinguished service and leadership. It's presented to Joshua Omalola, student member of the Prince George's County Board of Education, July 19th, July 2019 to June 2020. Thank you for your exemplary service and leadership as the 2019-2020 student member of the Prince George's County Board of Education, continuing a long tradition of outstanding service by Board of Education student members. As the student member of the Board of Education and Parkdale High School student, you provided advocacy that contributed to the examination of issues of passage of policies, especially involving financial literacy, mental health, equity, and state education funding that will enhance the education development and collegiate and career success of all of our students. We are extremely proud of you, your service, and dedication to the mission of Prince George's County Board of Education and the school system itself. The award is presented to you on the 25th day of June 2020 from the Prince George's County Board of Education, Dr. Allen Thornton as Chair, Mr. Edward Burrows as Vice Chair, and Dr. Monica Goldson as our CEO. Colleagues, please join me in congratulating Mr. Omalola for a term well-served. Now, my dear colleague, the floor is yours for no more than five minutes.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Thornton. First and foremost, I'd like to thank God for the opportunity to serve my peers on this Board of Education. I'd like to thank the family and friends that supported me along the way for this journey. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Thornton, Dr. Burrows, Dr. Murray, Dr. Ahmed, Dr. Thomas, Dr. Green. Thank you for showing your leadership look like. It's board members like you all that instilled in me the confidence that we will have a better Prince George's County. To all the board members that have taught, to all the board members on the board, thank you because you've all taught me something individually. From board members in District 4 and other board members that try to silence my voice, to board members in District 1 that elevated it. Thank you all so very much. This year, I was able to pass Financial Literacy with the support of my peers and the support of the members of the board. And we updated the curriculum. We've made more strides to have mental health in our classrooms. We made sure that we had voter registration for all our students to instill the importance of voting and civic engagement. As we all know, the next election is detrimental to the survival of our democracy. So I want to thank you all so much for that support. The work on the board is not finished. There's so much more that we have to do to ensure that African Americans are learning their history accurately, to elevate and level the playing field for members of our LGBT community, to make sure that we have mental health resources offered at all our schools, both middle and high. For this to be done, I will caution the board to make sure that we start the process and moving towards a fully elected board so the community can hold us accountable for all the actions we take in public and in fashion. The new student board member is excited and is willing to ensure that change happens. And I know Naina will do a great job, and I know that members of the board will welcome her with open arms. To Dr. Goldson and her administration, thank you. The coronavirus was not expected, and planning for it was very minimal. But when March rolled around, you picked the bootstraps, you lifted them up, and you did an amazing job. And from all the students, thank you so much for your support, and thank you so much for making sure that we got the best of this year possible. I am sure that there's many things left that we cannot still do. But the next year awaits, and I know that we will get it accomplished with a unified and more elected board. In closing, Black Lives Matter and arrest the killers that killed Rihanna Taylor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. And colleagues, give them another hand, applause there. Thank you, sir, for your service. Colleagues, at this point, a motion to, let's see. Ms. King, I don't see my, oh, yes. I want to have a motion to approve actions taken in executive session. May I have a motion to approve the items that we discussed in executive session? See the report from the CEO regarding administration of the school system? We discussed the employment assignment, compensation, performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials. We received information from investigative proceedings regarding internal audit. And finally, we received legal advice about appeals, and we discussed pending litigation. A motion is in order?
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded that we approve the items taken in executive session, the decisions taken in executive session. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposing, no.
Abstain.
Have it. Colleagues, there are follow-up items from our June 11th meeting. Those items have been posted for you onboard docs for you to review. And, Ms. King, thank you and your staff for doing that. At this point, I'll receive a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
To properly move and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. Here we go, discussion of that. Those in favor of the adjournment, please say aye.
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 Those opposing, no. And colleagues, I'm going to miss you all. Meeting is adjourned.
I'm going to call you. You ain't on vacation.
Be safe, though, colleagues. Be safe.